We call this meeting to an end. This is the Delaware County Commissioners' Meeting. It's January 6th. It's nine o'clock. Let's open the meeting with the pleasure we have.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I hope you had a good beginning. You called old Steve, please.
Mr. Reagan.
President.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Bro.
Here. Right, we have appointments to make. The list of 2020 appointments. John?
Thank you. There are two sets of appointments. As you know, there's the annual appointments. These are appointments that are every year. And then there are the appointments to the boards and commissions, which are, have a term on them. So first I'll go through the executive appointments, and these are the annual ones. The 911 directors, Paul Singleton, Executive Assistant Office Manager Jenny Honeycutt. You've already made the appointment of the county attorney. EMA Director and EMS Director Jason Rogers. Highway Superintendent Robert Jesse. Assistant Engineering Project Commissioner Angela Moyer. HR Director Pam McCammon. Veterans Affairs Officer Nate Jones. Director, or I guess Inspector, Waits and Measures Jeff Brandon. Maintenance Supervisor Charles Walker. Economic Development Brad Bookout. You also made an appointment to the Delaware County Finance Committee, which will be Jennifer Honeycutt. Alcohol Tobacco Commission, this is an annual appointment, Tom Simpson. The Delaware County Drainage Board will be Shannon Henry, Jamie Swoboda, John Landers, Bill Whitehead, Richard McIntyre. Redevelopment Commission will be James King, Bryce Conyers, Angie Moyer. The ex-official member with the school board, Paul Garrison, Superintendent of Delaware Schools. Then you have the Delaware Advancement Corporation, James King. Community Revitalization Economic Enhancement District, Creed, that's a mouthful. Dan Allen, Leslie Mathewsen, James King, Angie Moyer, Jeff Rodifer, Doug White. Then the Property Tax Board of Appeal, Peter Bowe, Sharon Black, and Robert Adams. So you would need a motion to make those appointments and a vote on them.
So, I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
All right, these are the appointments for the Boards of Commissions. Airport Authority Mike Kincaid, his term expires December 31st, 2023. Board of Health, Phyllis Burz Beatty and David Grasso, both their terms expire 12/31/23. Carville Greenway, Kyle Johnson, his term would expire 3/31/22. Convention and Tourism Board would be Jody Clevenger, her term would expire 12/31/21. Fair Board would be Martha Fabio, Jessica Masters, Christopher Matchit, Christina Mann. They will expire 12/31/22. Metropolitan Planning Commission would be Jesse Landis, whose term would expire 12/31/22. And then there's the elected official of the commissioners would be Shannon Henry, and that would be an annual appointment. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Jim Fowler, his term would expire 12/31/23. ICAP would be Commissioner Riggan, that's a one-year appointment. Animal Care and Services, James Turner, his term would expire 12/31/22. Need a motion for those.
John, we need to add for the regional.
That's a separate item on the agenda.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Now, the Delaware County Regional Waits, Wetter District Appointment?
Yes, I've submitted my letter of resignation. I just can no longer attend the meetings. My private practice, legal practice, has taken me away from some of the meetings. I missed most of the meetings in the final quarter, and it's just not right to continue on the board. So I've tendered my resignation as of last Friday, I believe.
I like John May. Bill Walters, he's sat on that board before. He's worked with a lot of the smaller towns and stuff with a lot of the waste management. So I'll make a motion to put Bill Walters on that board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Bill Walters, John, thanks for your time on that board, and we appreciate it. Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, now we have the soaring in of the Waits and Measures, Director and Deputy Inspector. This is a request by the state, so could I have, yeah. Is Paula here?
Yeah.
Birthday girl.
Paula, come up here. Today's Paula's birthday, too, so.
Turns 25 today.
Yep. I thought I'd just throw that in, Paula.
Thank you, Shannon.
Come on up, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently.
I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently.
Discharge the duties as Waits and Measures official.
Discharge the duties of Waits and Measures officials.
For my jurisdiction of Indiana.
For my jurisdiction of Indiana.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes, December 16th, 2018. I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Do you have minutes from the 30th?
No, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get those.
All right.
Contracts or agreements for approval of community foundation?
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Schrock. I'm the president of the Community Foundation of Muncie and Delaware County. I'm pleased to be here. I have just a short bit of information, not a contract or an agreement, just a presentation. I've gotten to know Commissioner Riggan through the Muncie Rotary Club, and she encouraged me to come and make a brief presentation to the commissioners about the work that we do in the community for Delaware County. We were established in May of 1985, so if you're doing math this early in the morning, we'll be 35 years old this May. We are a community foundation that supports the entire county. Our mission is to improve the quality of life for the residents here in Muncie and Delaware County. We do that by being a leader and encouraging philanthropy and increasing our endowment, a permanent source of funds, to grant back to nonprofit organizations in this community doing good work. We're excited about the fact that we are at $64 million in our total endowment. We manage 341 different funds, and every year we grant about $3 million back into the county to nonprofit organizations who are doing good work, meeting their mission day in and day out. About $1 million of that $3 million comes from our quarterly competitive grant cycle. That's an opportunity for nonprofit organizations to approach us and apply for grant funding for needs that they tell us about, and we're excited to kick off that cycle with the 2020 year. We work with about 65 volunteers from across the county that help us on committees, so that quarterly competitive grants committee, that's 12 members of those 65 volunteers, that review those grant applications and make recommendations to our Board of Directors. We are governed by a nine-member Board of Directors, all who live and work in Delaware County, and we have six staff members at the foundation, again, all who live and work in Delaware County. I have prepared packets for each of you that I will leave with you, so that you have reading material if you'd like to get to know us a little better. And we do send out an annual report each year, and we try to communicate that broadly on our website and by taking ads out in the newspaper, so that folks that aren't on our mailing list will get to hear the information. One fun fact that I will leave you with, last year, as I said, we granted about $1 million from our quarterly competitive grants. We had 57 funds that supported that grant making. There were 46 grants that were recommended for a total of just under $1 million, $992,554.50. And if you were to lay $1 bills, $992,554, $1 bills, end to end, you would be able to walk from downtown Muncie around the edge of the county and back. So again, we feel like our grant making does cut across the broad section of our community. The Grants Committee recommended grants, two different grants in economic development, seven grants in arts and culture, 11 grants supporting education, 12 grants supporting community betterment, and 14 grants supporting human services. And those are the five main areas within which we award grants. Thank you for your time this morning, and I'll leave these packets for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for the community. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You can go ahead and come back. Thanks, Bill. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public notice bidders for Wheeling Avenue paving project.
Yes, we advertised for Eaton Wheeling Pike and Wheeling Avenue. John, did you receive two bids? Is that what Denise said?
Two bids, yes. Oh.
They were due by Friday at noon.
Yes, they both arrived before noon on Friday. First one is E and B paving. This is for Road Project 2020-1. Is that just one of the projects?
Both projects are listed on my project number.
Okay.
Wheeling Avenue will have an alternate bid, so I think you'll list that as well.
Okay. This is E and B paving out of Muncie, Indiana. I'm looking to see if they do something for the alternate. Oh, they do. They've got Wheeling Avenue, 28 and Canal Road 950 North, their base bid is $951,564.52. And their alternate is $47,802.28. 47,802.28. The Eaton Wheeling Pike has a bid of $682,365.59. Second one is from First Brooks out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. All right, it did, there's a little different. Wheeling Avenue between State Road 28 and Canal Road 950 North, the base bid is $886,541.30. The alternate is $46,161. Even, 46,161. Then the Eaton Wheeling Pike, their base bid is $625,244.70. 625,244.70. Those are the two we have.
I'll make a motion to take this under advisement.
I have a motion to take the bids under advisement. I have a second. Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is two road dedication for Melton subdivision. Kathy?
Good morning. I'm Kathy. I'm from Ashton, New Hampshire, on last thing's been nice. We do have two flats that we have taken before the flat committee. The first one is on the list for Melton subdivision. It is over off of Proctor Road. We will be dedicating the road right of way right on Proctor for the flat. And the second one is for the Nottingham subdivision. It is off of Nevo Road. We have gone through the flat committee. They have asked that we continue further than what the flat will entail, so I will be back at the next meeting dedicating all of the road right of way on Nottingham's property. He owns 80 acres or 75 on this tract, and we will be taking it for the full extent, a road right of way on Nevo on his property. The reason it was not done, we could not put it on the flat itself, because if there was ever a vacation of Nevo, all of the right of way would end up with the person who owns the lot one of Nottingham, so we have to separate it in a separate document. The other part of that is I'm trying to get all the logistics together, making sure that the auditor's office is okay with how we're dedicating the remainder of the property on their documentation. So I'll be back on that one.
Are there any questions?
John looks that over, of course.
Yes, it looks, they look fine.
I am moved we adopted for them.
Tell me that. I have a motion to approve. Second roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. AT&amp;T contracts?
I'm Jeff McCarthy from American Construction Point in Indianapolis. We were working with the IT department on selecting a provider for network service between all of the Delaware County locations, as well as adding internet access for the new Justice Center and replacing the internet service for the county building. This contract will eliminate the need for building out dark fiber between the locations. It will use AT&amp;T's network as opposed to kind of building it ourselves. The advantage there is that the connectivity between the sites is not a one-to-one relationship, it's one-to-any. So if the county building were to lose power, or there was a fire in the server room or a switch died, the network wouldn't be disrupted at any of the other locations. So especially going with the new phone system, whatever phone system you select, this network will provide continuous service for all those locations and allow you to have much more reliable service than you have today, as far as your network is concerned. I believe that the, you guys have the contracts in front of you. I think, did you write those, Jenny? Okay.
Yes.
So the, one of the advantages of, we looked at several different vendors, one of the advantages that we had with AT&amp;T was that we could change the speed of the connection depending on the need. So if the needs changed, all we have to do is log into a portal and make a change. And the billing's all laid out in a table that shows what the additional cost would be if we increased the bandwidth between the sites. That network connection is, like I said, we can change it daily, so if there's ever an issue of not having enough bandwidth to do a specific task, it can be changed for a day, and the county would only be billed the extra amount per rated for that single Any questions that you guys have? Okay.
John, do you want this?
I did. I looked these up, and I looked these over, and they seem to be fine and appropriate.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. The AT&amp;T contract, roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, property 649 North Madison Street, Mr. Walters.
Morning Commissioners. Bill Walters, ECI Regional Planning District. The handout in front of you, or what I'm here today for, is 649 North Madison Street. It has been identified, RFP process. I have identified a user that will rehab this facility. It is just north of Wiser. It's in number three there, highlighted in blue. This has been on the tax rolls since 2011. 14 has not had taxes paid. It is $26,474 in arrears, and the current owner is deceased. This has also been identified as a trouble area. Police Department's notorious side activities going on. So this would get it back in an area there that we're trying to develop in McKinley area to rehab that area in front of Muncie Community Schools. Just as an update on a side note on that, all the properties that you have given to ECI are back on the tax rolls except for three at this current time. Those three are 501 West Jackson, 625 East Wiser, and 2501 Mount Pleasant. Those are all being done right now by IDM. We have garnered a great relationship with IDM. We are getting the tanks pulled at 501 and at 625, and I would say that IDM now has exceeded well over $100,000, $150,000 in costs that you have not had to concur. We have gotten the brownfields eliminated, and we are putting them back on the tax rolls. So I respectfully ask to be awarded the tax certificate on 649 North Madison.
Appreciate your work on that bill, and I so move.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Bill, for doing that. Contact to retain attorney, Meeks Cockro.
This is an attorney to represent the commissioners on the appeal and the petition for mandate filed by the developer of the Delaware General location out on State Road 67. My office has a conflict, is one of the attorneys in my office is one of the neighbors, and actually they're trying to approach upon his property as well. So I reached out to Meeks Cockro, who is the county attorney in Randolph County. I've known Meeks for a number of years. I'm an old guy, so even to his grandfather, so, and father, so Meeks does an excellent job, and I would recommend that Meeks be retained to represent the commissioners in that matter.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve. Second roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Delaware County cabling quote?
Jeff McCarthy from American Construction Point again. So when, part of the, part of the process for obtaining a new phone system, we looked at the cabling for the county building, the data cabling, and we immediately noticed that there were a number of issues with the cabling that would prevent any modern phone system from being implemented. So we went out and solicited bids from a number of contractors, and the bid from Ambed Enterprises was by far the lowest, and the individuals highly recommended. So this, this cabling quote would include brand-new racks for your switches, and it would centralize all of the switch locations into the closets behind the men's room on each floor. Currently, switches are, I mean, I'm sure everybody in the county knows that works here, that, you know, everybody has switches in their area, and they're kind of inconvenient locations. So this would centralize all those into the closets and would allow us to consolidate the number of switches that the county has to purchase for the, for the upcoming phone system.
Notice they never broken down for us, but grand total was $77,000.
So, so there are three numbers. There's, the first number is for the fiber connectivity between the server room in the basement and each individual switch closet, and I believe that was $9,000 and some change. Second quote was for the actual cabling, which is the drops to each workstation, each desk and printer, network device. And then the third was for removal of the old cable. So actually, once everything is in place, once we get everybody cut over to the new cabling, then they'll be able to come back and remove the old cabling out of the building to get it cleaned up. So the grand total was right at $100,000. One thing that we would like to request is a $5,000 allowance in case that there are additional drops that need to be made, that, you know, equipment that wasn't included in account and was overlooked, or equipment that's been added since, because this quote was done back in August, I believe.
This quote is, this quote has been, they made this quote off of what currently exists in the building, correct?
Someone. So there were a bunch of drops that weren't in use, so we actually counted active, active drops. So if we need to add extras later, then we'll have to go back and add those, but this would include, like, this room has like eight or 10 that are never used, so we didn't, we only included a couple drops, I believe, for this room, other than the workstations. So we cut costs where we could, so we wouldn't have to be running a bunch of cables that weren't going to get used. You know, there were areas that had cables that were in kind of corners that are full of equipment and, you know, storage, so we didn't, we didn't replace every single cable in the building, but this gets everyone that has a workstation, a phone, printer, fax machine, any of those devices, we included those in accounts.
The problem I have with this, come November, we may not need some that exist currently because officers will be leaving this building.
Yeah, but we're gonna be filling these rooms that were at home with.
Right.
Agencies and.
So one of the things that we did request is a service loop at the end of each of these, so in the event that, you know, the third floor gets rebuilt, shuffled around, we can move these drops wherever they're needed. So they're not like, you know, yeah, you'll have, you'll have the cable there, but to implement a phone system, you're gonna have to do this before that happens. So I don't know that the timing between moving everybody and the phone system coming in would really be workable.
I just, yeah, I just don't want to put a bunch of drops in that we're not needing.
Right. And like, so we tried to minimize the drops and keep those to a minimum, so that we wouldn't have, understand, I understand that you guys are moving a lot of people over to the new Justice Center in November, but, you know, your current phone system is in the support, in the life.
We know that. We know that. What's your pleasure, folks?
I've got it, and the phone system. I live with a dog, and it's bitter.
One second. We have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, department heads or elected officials?
Paul Singleton, Director 911, thank you for the pre-appointment. Last meeting, you okayed signing the AT&amp;T 911 upgrade, and I'm just wondering what the status is about, if you've actually received the final document to sign.
I haven't seen anything yet. I haven't seen anything.
You haven't seen anything? Okay.
I will communicate with AT&amp;T to find out where this, Craig, been, okay, find out what, find contracts up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marta Moody with the Plan Commission Office, and actually, I've just got some information for you from the part of our operations that deals with the building commissioner and permitting, and it's a three-year comparison of construction projects to give you the 2019 figures, comparing that to the last two years. And one thing that you'll notice, that single-family dwellings are up, and also the number of registered contractors is up. So. So that, those are two good indicators of economic growth and renewed vitality.
Need some good news, though. Thank you.
Do they have any questions?
Yeah, I'm, we're, Marta's here. How are we doing on the pond, digging? We know a lot of people love to dig ponds, how's that?
It is waiting on final edits and tweaks to it. But, yeah, it'll be something that we should be able to do in the next, in the next, I'd say, month and a, two months. Two months. I never know how busy we're gonna be, but, yeah.
But it's something, and of course, this is something for Angie. Driving around the county, a lot of times I see drainage problems in the road cuts or driveways. Do we ever go back and slap hands or something, that someone, we find something?
Road cuts for driveways, or you mean road cuts on the road?
Well, the driveways, the culverts, because they forget to put the culvert in so the water can flow from their house.
We have a permit process.
Yeah, but do we ever go back and say?
Oh, we do final inspections.
So if I give you some addresses, you can go out and check it out. Because we have to have good drainage to have good roads that we're putting in. I just wondered if we need to promote this a little bit more to people that they're responsible for their own culvert underneath their driveway.
One thing I will say is that we, I think we've got a pretty good system where my office doesn't issue a building permit until we have a sign-off for a drainage plan if required for the driveway permit, and even for a sign-off for the county surveyor. So it's, it's like we all work together to make sure that, that things are coordinated.
Good, good, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have the Waits and Measures monthly report in our package, everybody see that? The Paying and Claiming's a one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, forty-three dollars and thirty cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second on the Paying and Claiming, roll call please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Questions from the public? All right, I'll take a motion to recess.
Second.
A motion in a second on favor of stateye. Aye. For recess.